Welcome to a weekly Commissioner's Status Update. We have a full schedule this morning. We're probably gonna have to shuffle some things around to accommodate our agenda. In any case, it is March 2nd, 2020. The time is 11:00 a.m. I'm calling this meeting officially to order, attending are Commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Phillyos. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Okay, what I'm gonna recommend, but I'd like to ask Clerk Brandon first if it's okay with him. I'd like to move the ballot language for the U R D to item number one, Clerk Brandon. Is that okay?
Certainly, Senator Phillyos.
All right. All right then, so that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna move item three, which is the ballot language, so we can accommodate everybody. This way if you have to leave, you can leave. The meeting is one hour. It will be limited to one hour because there's a little bit of a concern over at Cutney Health regarding spreading of the coronavirus. And so I think we're gonna wanna attend to that and see what's going on simply because we do not have, and I'll say it again, we do not have any confirmed cases in Idaho yet. But it is something that we're concerned about. Certainly Panhandle Health is watching it very carefully. Okay, so let's move right on here. So the purpose of this meeting this morning, this particular agenda item, is to address the ballot language, okay? Not the question of whether or not we like U R Ds and what we can do to change them or fix them. That really doesn't lie within the purview of the Board of County Commissioners. The only thing, only area where we have any authority is to place something on the ballot before the voters of Cutney County as an advisory vote, non-binding, only. As insofar as the structure of the U R Ds is concerned, how they operate, the expiration periods, that all lies within the state legislature. We, as a body of three, have no influence there, other than as much as you do, that we can come forward and testify as individuals. Okay. So basically, we're not gonna go into the question of legitimacy. What I am gonna do though, is normally we reserve public comment to the end. What I'm gonna do is let you get up and speak if you wish. State your name, state your address. We're gonna limit the comments to two minutes, so we can accommodate everybody if in fact everybody chooses to speak, wherever you stand on the issue. Okay, so once again, it'll be one hour max. What I do wanna point out is that, and I think Treasurer Matheson wanted to know what the results of the poll was. We had about sixteen hundred, and I guess Nancy can comment, Nancy Jones, on this further, screen views, but the actual vote, I think we're about four hundred, four hundred people that actually voted. Eighty, I wanna say eighty-seven percent in favor of the advisory vote, and thirteen percent opposed to the vote. So I'm stating it in those terms, but however it was phrased, that's how it came out. There were people who commented, and Nancy can address that later toward the end of the meeting. I'll get with you in a minute.
Just to clarify, it was eighty-six percent against, eighty-six percent against not having the vote, but the language itself was eighty-six percent against.
Not in favor of the U R D.
Just slightly different.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Fair enough. Thank you. And so anyway, so I just wanted to point that out. There were a number of comments that were made. If we have time toward perhaps the end of the meeting, maybe Nancy Jones can come in 'cause she entertained some of those comments. Unfortunately, there is a lot of misunderstanding. This is a complex issue. U R Ds are not simple. It is a complex issue. There are people who are just simply opposed to them, but from the nature of the comments, what is clear is that a lot of us simply don't understand. And that's not unusual. That's not to be derisive. It is a complex issue, and there are just probably a handful of people, usually in the cities, that understand these better than most of us. Okay, so what I wanna do before I open it up, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna open it up for you folks to comment, and you can comment about the U R Ds. I would appreciate it if you would keep your comments somewhat relevant to the U R Ds. It will be strictly timed at two minutes, so that we can get through this. But what I wanna point out, because of some of the misunderstanding, and I had to spend some time educating myself over the weekend, because I'm not so sure I fully understand the complexity of the U R Ds. But I have a question for Treasurer Matheson. When an individual, when a U R D is formed, okay, what portion, and I'm gonna address this question to the unincorporated area of the county, not the cities, but those of us who live in the county, what, what components of their total tax bill are, that actually affects the U R D? You have the top line, which is the county taxes, right? That's one. There are others. Do you know what those are?
No.
Okay. Let me try and elaborate. People are under the impression that your total tax bill somehow comes into question when you're paying a U R D, or you're paying your, the increment that constitutes the U R D. There are essentially four areas from your tax bill, if you live in the unincorporated area, that come into play when the amount that you contribute to the U R D. First is your county tax. When you look at your county tax bill, from this, from the treasurer, you'll see your first line item, county taxes. That's typically twenty-five percent of the tax bill. The other three areas that lend themselves to being, to having an impact on what you contribute to the U R D is EMS, emergency medical services, your relevant highway district, could be Lakes, could be Eastside, and N I C. And all those are taken into account, and then a formula is applied that determines what you contribute to the U R D. Now, I'm gonna put that aside. I'm gonna come back to it later, okay? Because I'm gonna try to address some of the misunderstanding. But again, and I think I'm gonna ask Jeff Tyler to comment on this at some point. You have a meeting. Is it Thursday night, Jeff?
Thursday night, six, February.
All right. So let's, let's proceed with public comment. Jeff, I'm gonna ask you to go first. Did you wanna speak?
Sure, I wanted to say something. Thank you guys for the advisory vote. I really appreciate that. And on the language, you know, there's some controversy on how the language is gonna be. Is it gonna be for future elections or future things? I know that you guys are against talking about the hospital district, which is fine. Before us, we do have the Post Falls U R D coming up, and I think there's one at Rathdrum and one at Hayden. And so we do have those that are before us that we could address in the advisory vote. The advisory vote could be something simple though, mentioning that being that, you know, county citizens are paying about three and a half million a year going to see U R Ds. How do you feel about U R Ds? Are you in favor or against? Could be something as simple as that, but it would be nice if you could let the people know the burden that U R Ds have on the county.
Okay. As long as I'm gonna let you go a little further, Jeff. Do you want us to speak about your meeting Thursday night?
Sure. For those that don't know, at the library, we're gonna have, it's basically an informational meeting. At, and we're gonna have, Steve is going to do an opening statement on how he understands and the numbers and stuff about the U R Ds. And then we're gonna have a panel that's gonna consist of Dan Gookin, Coeur d'Alene Councilman, also Matt Roder, Hayden Councilman, and Joe Malloy, Post Falls Councilman. And then, of course, I'll be on that panel too. So we're gonna wanna maybe speak for about a half hour, then open it up to questions. So like I said, it's basically an informational thing, so we're hoping people will turn out and be, hopefully get some good information on how it affects us.
Was anybody invited from the city?
Yeah, I'm thinking of Ignite, but they were. Yeah, Roger was inviting just about everybody, and also Charlene in here is inviting.
And I mean to participate on the panel?
Oh, no, we thought four people was enough for the panel.
Dan Gookin is on the city council.
Right, Dan Gookin is on the city council, but my question is, balance. You know, most of these folks, I presume, were opposed to the U R D. Evan may be wrong here, but do you believe you have balance?
You know, we, we thought about trying to get some from the other side, if you wanna, I can phrase it that way. But we feel that the newspaper does a pretty good job of really saying.
Sorry, you'll, you'll take one at a time. Okay. All right. There is a gentleman that I can suggest to you, and I don't know where he stands on the whole issue, but I'll send you an email later. It turns out, he was part of the body that was advising the governor back in nineteen eighty-four on the formation of U R Ds. So he might be able to provide some historical perspective, and I'll send you the information. I don't know if he's willing to come forward. He is now retired. He used to be a commercial appraiser.
It will be open, I said, the questions from anybody in the panel that wants to attend.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so now we'll go to our strict time limit of two minutes. Who else would like to speak?
Okay, well, I'm gonna.
Name and address?
Yes, I'm Brent Praise. I live in the county.
Oh, okay.
Brent Praise, yes. Thank you to, yes, we did. I spoke to all of you, and I wanna say thank you for the advisory vote. I am against the U R Ds, and I appreciate you guys taking this gentleman's suggestion and putting it to a vote and letting the county know, the people know, what its costiness and what it means. And thank you for your good work.
Okay. I'm not gonna argue with that. Anyone else? Please feel free, Brent.
Mr. Chairman, Brent Regan, Coeur d'Alene, unincorporated. And it's true that the U R Ds don't have a direct impact on people's taxes if they live outside of the U R D, but money is fungible, and there is an indirect impact because the money that would be used for growth gets diverted to the U R D. So because counties run on budgets and not taxes, the budget has to be satisfied. So money has to be applied for the growth through the budget, and that money has to come from somewhere. And it comes from the taxpayer. So to say that the U R Ds don't have a direct impact outside the county is correct. They have an indirect impact, and they most certainly do. That's easily, that's easily proven. On the topic of the advisory vote, it is an advisory vote, so by definition, it is a political vote.
Okay.
Right? We are not making law. We are not, there's no direct effect. It is advisory to the politics of the situation. So when you're considering the language, I would encourage you to consider the politics of the language. The people that want the advisory vote are having their taxes impacted by city council members, and they don't live in the city. So they have no direct way to influence the city council. This is, by definition, taxation without representation. There's taxes being applied by someone who I have no vote over, and as a result, people get angry. The editor of the press said that having the vote would be divisive. I think it's just the opposite. Unless you give people an opportunity to have their say, that angers them. And the more specific you can be in your language about that say, and the more people that you can encompass in that language, the less divisiveness there'll be. It will calm people. It will let them know that they had a say, and hopefully it will put the fear in other politicians should they elect it to pass this. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Summer. Summer Bush now, Post Falls. I would just say, in the language, please try to not use percentages 'cause sometimes those can be fudged. To try to be more exact with the numbers, even if they're numbers that not everyone understands. I just think when you use like the, like with the misunderstanding with the eighty-six percent versus the twenty, that stuff seems to be a little fudgeable. You guys would be accused of being biased. So I would say stick to straight numbers in your advisory vote. If it's specific to like Post Falls and it's this amount of money, use that exact amount of money. That'd be my suggestion.
Anyone else? Feel free. This is your time. No? Okay. Leslie, Bill, comments?
No. I'll be happy to get this thing on the ballot and get it voted on.
So I'm just gonna reiterate my original position. The reason why I would like to use hospital corridors as an example is because they are a taxing entity. They have imminent domain power. And so for them to go through a U R D process, I don't think is reasonable or proper. It's, it just smacks transparency in the face, and, and I'm not saying whether I'm against the project or not against the project. I'm just saying that they had other means to do it. So I would be in favor of still using that language, and more specifically, mentioning the forty-six million dollars of property taxes that would go to Indiana.
Okay, well, for the record, and some of you might already know this, we did take a vote last week. We didn't have precise language, but the vote last week, and I stressed that it was unanimous, was to use generic language and not specifically call out a specific U R D. There was some discussion. There might have been some disagreement, but that was, for the record, unanimous vote. You can check the minutes. You can check the audio. Okay. But let's come back to that. We discussed three possible, three possible versions of the language. Are you still, let me ask you this, Leslie. Are you still in favor of the third one?
What's the third one? Oh, mentioning.
Do you wanna read it?
Do you support the use of urban renewal districts in Cutney County, which effectively increases the actual property tax rate countywide? Project examples: East Post Falls, Center Point, Atlas Mill, Health Corridor, and West Rathdrum. Um, I, I suppose I'm, that would be fine.
We made a decision last week, and I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, let me, let me go through a couple things here, just to clarify. I don't know if it's gonna clarify, but it's gonna help. So what I did over the weekend is I looked at five different tax bills. The one was Steve Matheson's, and this is all public record, by the way. I'm not picking on you 'cause mine's gonna come up too, so I'm gonna choose you and me. Okay. And I wanna give you just a picture, and then you can draw your own conclusions, okay? Steve Matheson's home in two thousand fourteen was assessed at seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Now, understand this is assessment, not necessarily market value. His market value is probably higher than that. Steve had a successful career, and it's to his credit. His taxes that year, and I'm just rounding this off, were two, twenty-four hundred and fifty-two bucks. In two thousand and nineteen, his assessed valuation went to almost nine hundred and fifty thousand. But his tax actually dropped, so he, his taxes, his overall pro, county component, not talking about the total tax. We don't affect that here. County component decreased by ninety bucks in six years, but he had a twenty-seven percent increase in value. So not to pick on Treasurer Matheson, here's mine. By the way, we sold our home in November. We now live in our daughter's home 'cause she lives in Australia. She's the owner, so we're property. We're not property poor. I don't know what we are now, but anyway. So I'll choose mine. So in two thousand and fourteen, and this is a home we just sold November, a few months ago, my assessment was two hundred and sixty-two thousand, we'll call it two hundred and sixty-three thousand. My prop, my county component for my taxes was about eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. In two thousand and nineteen, my assessment was three hundred, almost three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. My taxes went up slightly to nine hundred and eighteen dollars. So my tax increase, county component only, went up fifty-five bucks in six years. I had a forty percent increase in value. So I was assessed at three sixty-eight. By the way, we sold the property for five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, okay? So the point that I'm getting at, if there is a point, and I'll let you draw your own conclusions, is it's really, it's very difficult to determine precisely how much money is coming out. But however, in my case, now, I was in the city. I was not in a U R D district, but I was in a city. So my contribution basically was seventy-six bucks. So of the, of the roughly, whatever it was that I was paying, nine hundred and seventeen dollars plus those other few taxing districts, I was paying approximately seventy-six dollars to a U R D. Now, had I been in a U R D district, it would have, my contribution would have been higher, okay? It just so happened I was in the city, but not in a specific district, okay? And that's pretty much the way it runs. Okay, so.
Can I just make a couple comments? Those two examples that you just described is ignoring the other taxing authorities that are impacted as well, including the cities, including the city of Coeur d'Alene, 'cause the same concept is happening inside the city itself, creating the U R D.
That's true.
So there's gonna be a reallocation.
That's true.
From those out to the other city residents.
Right.
So my tax bill was closer to eight grand, and when you actually take the calculation of all the taxing authorities that are impacted, it's significantly more. That's just my.
Yeah, but when you, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Well, in the point with the hospital corridor, this is the biggest U R D to date?
As far as I'm aware of, yes.
So I think that has a lot to do with it too, and district-wise as well, boundary-wise?
I don't think from an acre standpoint it is, but probably from a market value standpoint.
Okay.
Yeah, and by the way, there, there are no more U R Ds anticipated in the city of Coeur d'Alene, at least not in the foreseeable future, and by that I mean the next four or five years. Post Falls, different story. I think Spirit Lake is a different story too, and I think Rathdrum, if I'm not mistaken.
May I ask, how you know that?
Basically, in conversations with the mayor, he said there's nothing anticipated over the next five years.
They have a.
And possibly beyond. I don't know.
They have a land out there for the east.
Yes.
East Sherman, that U R D is mentioned as the possible contingent for paying for that, so.
Yeah, and that, and that hasn't been firmed up yet, so it's still very much in the discussion stage. But that, that could be a possibility, right? In any case, I just wanted to bring that out, because again, I just wanna point out, you're right. There are other taxing districts, but not all taxing districts are subject to an extraction for the U R D. So let's move on to the ballot language. I'll tell you what. I'm willing to make you a trade, Leslie. I'll go with this.
Okay.
But there's one problem, and it's a problem with all three suggestions. Let me read it again. Do you support the use of urban renewal districts in Cutney County, which effectively increases the actual property tax rate countywide?
Tax rate.
Tax rate. Yeah, we gotta be very careful with that. Let me be more specific. If you look at our budget for this year, our effect, our tax rate dropped from last year from twenty-eight dollars per hundred thousand evaluation to twenty-four. So that's a decrease in the rate. What I would rather see this say is, instead of saying effectively increases the actual property tax rate, that it increases a portion of your county taxes, or countywide taxes. Because we can't assign a specific, we gotta be very careful with that. So to say that it's increasing a portion of your taxes is probably more accurate. It's more general, but it's probably more appropriate. You okay with that?
Steve, how do you feel about that? 'Cause I've kinda been running with.
I, this is a conversation that the county commissioners is having. I've told you what I would like to see on the ballot, and I think at this point, it's, it's up to you three, so.
Do you want Summer to?
Please, go right ahead.
I don't understand what you mean by rate or portion, so how would other people understand that on the ballot?
Well, we can't be any more specific than that.
Okay.
Okay, the problem is, if you talk rate, it's not necessarily the rate that's being affected. You are paying a portion of your overall tax to the U R D. That's all we can say at this point.
So the portion's kinda understandable, but then it's still, for me, with both of them, a rate of what or portion of what? A portion of a whole, a portion of a part of a pie?
No, a portion of, no, a portion of your county taxes. I'm keeping the rest of the wording the same, okay? I'm just saying.
No, I'm just trying to understand, 'cause if I don't understand, other people won't understand.
At the risk of, I, I know you guys voted last week, but the reason why I used a specific U R D is that it has actual numbers, definitive numbers that were calculated by the actual city itself and its urban renewal district. Everything in that ballot language that I have submitted came from their language.
That's fine.
It's, it's definitive. I think once you move off of that specific U R D, we're gonna run into issues like this, where it becomes hard to articulate, what are we voting on?
Okay, to that point, let me also say, and I think you're aware of this, there is a legal opinion that basically says that if we target a specific U R D, we're pretty much stepping outside the spirit of the law, or the statute, that allows us to put this on the ballot. And so that's what I'm also being guided by.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Go ahead.
And I appreciate that. You guys have to make that decision from a legal standpoint, having not seen the most updated legal opinion. All I can tell you is that is in contradiction to the chief elections officer in Cutney County and the chief elections offer, officer for the state of Idaho.
Okay, and I, and I'm not convinced that they're in contradiction. We might be saying two different things. I think that, I think my understanding, and I didn't speak with the gentleman directly, is that the broader question is, can we put the question of an advisory vote regarding U R Ds on the ballot? And his answer to that is yes. How specific we can get and whether we can target a specific U R D that was established by the city is a different question and a legal question. And I think that's where the opinion that we have says we're crossing the line.
Okay, follow-up question, just to continue.
Last one, and then we go forward. Go ahead.
Is that your rationale, the legal concern for not putting the specific information on the ballot?
That's only one of them. Okay.
Okay. I just, since I was mentioned here, I thought I'd weigh in. I did talk to Secretary Denny, and he was very clear that the specific language is not illegal in accordance with thirty-one, seven-one-eight. He has written an opinion to that effect.
Okay, I have not seen that, okay? And therefore, I'm gonna go with the more general language. We're gonna identify.
Yeah, I'm not trying to tell you, I'm just weighing in of what Secretary Denny has told me.
But was Secretary Denny, was he addressing specifically the hospital corridor?
He said there's absolutely nothing illegal about the language that he had seen, which was the language that Stephen had presented.
Okay, fine. I still have to go with the people who are tasked with protecting not only the B O C C, but the taxpayers of the county. And again, I'm willing to concede to include the health corridor, and it's the third option that Commissioner Leslie Duncan has put forth. What I would like to do is change the language at least to remove actual property tax rate countywide to a portion of, a portion of a residence taxes countywide.
Say property tax.
Property tax, yeah. And so we're identifying at least several U R Ds here. East Post Falls, Center Point, Atlas Mill, Health Corridor, and West Rathdrum. Okay. So do you wanna restate it? Do you wanna put it in the form of a motion?
Well, let's, let me just make sure that we got it. Do you support the use of urban renewal districts in Cutney County, which effectively increases a portion of, you originally said of countywide taxes, but of.
Property taxes, go ahead.
Property tax countywide.
Go ahead.
Okay, so effectively increases a portion of property taxes countywide.
Right.
And then, project examples include East Post Falls, Center Point, Atlas Mill, Health Corridor, and West Rathdrum.
There you go. And then the choice is yes or no?
Right.
Okay. Do you wanna put that in the form of a motion?
Before we go to a motion.
Go right ahead, Bill.
Jump in. I think anything that results in taxation without representation, regardless of the amount, is wrong. That's why I don't like U R Ds at all, period, end of subject. I have never met one I like. I never will. I would like them done away with, but that's not something that we have any control over at the county level. My language, U R Ds, are you for them or against them? And you know, it would be about ninety-eight percent, I think, against them, that people understood the least amount. But we have to put something on the ballot more articulate than that. So I understand the struggle. I appreciate it.
So then, do you wanna put it, Leslie, in the form of a motion? I'm sorry. Ruben, go right ahead.
Well, since we are now talking about specifically naming U R Ds, I have a concern. And the concern is, will there be any way, shape, or form that we can read, say to the community, to the voters, that, and what an advisory vote is? I've been talking to people about this issue, and most of them don't know what an advisory vote is. They will think, I'm concerned that the voter will think that their voting no, and that it will go away. And that, as we all know, that's not the case. This will have no effect on the ultimate result.
Right.
So I'm concerned that we would be deceiving voters.
Clerk Brandon, is there, when you have an advisory vote, is there any language on the ballot that states that this is an advisory vote?
Yeah, it would be, the language must be approved by your board and then approved by the clerk. So I would assume that the clarity that this vote is only advisory would help alleviate some of Ruben's concerns. However, it needs to be not only clear that it's advisory, but I believe there needs to be some public education as well.
Yes, which I definitely intended to start that ball rolling and use our social media platform here as well as my own to do that, yeah.
And let me state what, I'll restate the statute here. It's very quick. It's very succinct. And let me state what, I'll restate the statute here. It's very quick. It's very succinct. It's Idaho Code thirty-one dash seven, one, eight. And it reads, "The Board of County Commissioners shall have the authority to place a question on the ballot pertaining to any issue before the citizens of that county during a primary or general election," period. "The results of such an election shall be advisory only, non-binding." Okay.
So we could say per statute thirty-one dash seven, one, eight. But also it says, "Do you support the use of?" So it's kind of, to me, it's really general. So I'm not sure, even if we said, "Do we support the use, do we not support the use?", are people going to think U R Ds are going away if they vote no? You think so?
I think.
Hmm, it's too general. Like, more specific for people like me, because we don't quite understand. We need to be very clear.
I think we're going to have to finalize it if we're going to move forward. We need to do that today. I don't think you're going to come up with a perfect, you know, perfect language. I think we have to take every opportunity to make sure people understand what it is and what it's not. So I think you're okay using, "Do you support the use of urban renewal districts"? I think you're fine with that.
All right, well, you can make a motion. You can vote out and move on, but if something else comes up, I mean, it's not subject to, what?
Well, I am not going to revisit it, okay? Once we make this decision, we have to go forward. Clerk Brennan also has a deadline.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, I was just going to point that out. And the other thing, and I will assume that once this vote is taken today, it will go to legal for review.
Yes.
If I could be involved in those meetings, I would appreciate that as well. Thank you. It'll save us from doing it twice.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just not sure about using advisory vote language at this point. Is, that's why I'm concerned because it was just that question on there. And, you know, as long as our education is such that it's like, hey, this doesn't do away with advisory, or U R Ds. I mean, that's a state legislature.
Yeah, that's right. That's a whole different question.
All right, then I move that the following ballot language be submitted for the May primary vote. Do you support the use of urban renewal districts in Cootenay County, which effectively increases a portion of property taxes countywide? Project examples, East Post Falls, Center Point, Atlas Mill, Health Corridor, and West Rathdrom.
And then yes or no?
Correct.
I second the motion.
Phil Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye.
Chairman Villias.
Aye, and let me add that this is for the May nineteenth, twenty twenty, primary election. Aye. So the vote carries. We have language for the May nineteenth, primary election. We have ballot language. Thank you, everyone. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.